We have a call in. Thank you very much for being so patient. If you would please stand and face the American flag with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to introduce the people on the front here. And please raise your hand as I give your name. Selectmen Chairperson Betty Gorsky, Member Joe Demore, and Member Bill Dern. Town Clerk Ambrodi, Town Council William Hewitt, Finance Director Denise Dimbowski. On my right is the Finance Committee Chairman Bill Cook, Michelle O'Keefe, Lee Berry, Andy Wilds, and Belle New. Thank you so much. And we have on the stage, I'd like you to give a warm welcome to our new Library Director, Amy Kramer. Please stand with me. Thank you so much. I'd like to give a few housekeeping rules. The non-voters are sitting up on the stage. Some rules of procedure. Some of you and many of you will have been here last year and had a few little vaucous events then. So I'm asking you, please, will you speakers conduct yourselves in a calm manner? And please, you will not criticize any other person attending. And no raised voices, please. All speakers will use the microphones. We have one over here and... Oh, one entered the stage, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite see it. You give your name and address before you speak. We have time limits for speakers. Presenters who are presenting the article have the limit of six minutes. If there is something that is a very complicated article, I might give them a little dispensation to speak a little longer, but they have to ask for that first of all. Following that, if we have discussion or questions, you have a three-minute limit. Non-voters, people on the stage, who wish to speak are allowed to speak, but only with the permission of you folks, the voters. So if there is somebody up there who wants to speak, they can raise their hand and ask, and I ask you for permission for them to do it. And you say yes or no, okay? The final thing is dispensing with the reading of the article. We have done this for quite a few years. We've got some very long articles here in this town meeting. Dispensing with the reading can be voted on once, right at the very beginning, at the start of the meeting, to cover all articles. In other words, the moderator just gives a synopsis of the article, and we don't have to read the whole thing right through. If you wish to do that, then someone has to make a motion to dispense with the readings of the articles. And I have to, we have to vote on that. Okay? Is there anyone who would like to make that motion right now? Someone was made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the articles. Is there any discussion on that, or shall we go? Yes. Yes, we will. To my mind, we opened the meeting as soon as we had the Pledge of Allegiance, but to be legal, I guess we'll say this meeting is open. So we have a motion made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the article. Any discussion? Then those in favor of dispensing with the reading say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The majority have it. Thank you. I'll ask you permission to read the greetings, for Ambrodi to read the greetings.
To Robert J. Kamelowitz, Chief of Police of the Town of Groveland in the County of Essex. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify one, the inhabitants of said town, who are qualified to vote at the annual town meeting, to meet at the Dr. Alma S. Fagnell School, 253 School Street, Groveland, Mass., on Monday, April 27, 2015, 7:30 PM, to vote on following articles. This is a special town meeting.
Now we have to revote, I'm sorry, I'm a little rusty here. We have to revote on dispensing with the reading of the article. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The majority have it. Article one requires a two-thirds affirmative vote. To see if the town will amend the vote under Article one, special town meeting to vote to return the appropriated amount of $187,800 to the state balization fund, as the costs are not needed to reduce the overall borrowing for the project. Articles submitted by the Finance Director. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable, you have to use the mic, I think.
Favorable action.
Finance Board?
Favorable action.
Would someone like to move?
Move.
No favorable action.
Move favorable action.
Okay, no favorable action. Second favorable action. Any discussion on this? There being then, we will take a vote. First of all, we'll take a voice vote. If it's overwhelmingly two-thirds or more, we will move on. If not, then we will have a hand vote. Those in favor of Article one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous vote, over two-thirds. Thank you. Article one. Article two. To vote to extend the deadline to June 30, 2018, for Article 28. Appropriate up to $24,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, open space for the purpose of conservation restriction. Project to be managed by the Finance Director of Groveland Conservation Commission, under the CPA category of open space. This article will extend the original deadline of June 30, 2015, for three years, by placing required conservation restrictions on three land parcels previously purchased or owned by the town. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable action.
Move unfavorable.
Moved unfavorable. Okay. So, is there a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded for unfavorable. If you vote yea on unfavorable, you are voting this article down. If you vote no on this article, you're bringing it back, and it can't be voted on again.
So yes, please, no, and no.
That's right. So if you vote yes now, you are voting this article down. You are voting against it, okay? Those in favor of yea, say yea.
Yea.
I'm sorry. A little slow tonight. You're quite right. Discussion, anyone, please? Please give your name and address.
Dick Hodges, 35 Union Street. Recently, we paid $3.7 million for a piece of property, and I abstained at that vote because the title wasn't clear. I actually had more questions than I did answers. And then after the fact, we found out that the land was assessed for approximately $990,000. Now, to put that in practical terms, that means I go out looking for a car. The salesman says, "Mr. Hodges, it's going to cost you 25 grand." Well, I say to the salesman, "Absolutely not. I'm going to cut you a check for $100,000, four times what it's worth." So I was troubled with the fact that not one, and I'm not laying this necessarily at the feet of the selectmen, but somebody or somebodies here knew that the land was assessed for less than a million, and we bought it for 3.7. That is absolutely beyond foolish. It heads very quickly to stupid. And actually, a lie of omission is just as bad, I think, as a lie of intent. So, now we have seven projects, and I see value in all seven projects, by the way. However, I'd like to see all information on the table, and if we have information, it needs to be spread out to everyone. We have two questions that each of us ought to be asking ourselves. Do we know the difference between what we want and what we need? Secondly, can we afford these projects? We have in Washington DC for decades politicians that are addicted to spending our money, and we ought not to be using that same model. So, and I don't get goosebumpy about state reimbursements and grants. That's our money that we beg for to come back to us. If we just steamroll these projects through without thinking, there will be financial consequences. Higher taxes are obvious. I've even heard rumor about an infamous idea, paying, having all of our kids' parents pay for the athletic fields that they use. And if this is going to continue to, you know, spend $3.7 million to buy something and then put this on the back of our kids, I think that's reprehensible. So we need to slow down, we need to think carefully, and if we're going to continue to keep buying up, buying up, whether we can afford it or not, then maybe we ought to be thinking about the CPA going to 1% instead of 3. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to just make note of everybody here in the hall tonight. We have not seen on our income taxes any increase on that land yet. So as you guys come tonight, you do your vote, please keep that in mind. Property test.
You have three minutes.
Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptack Road. I believe that we're voting on question, Article three.
Two.
Two of this special town meeting. That's correct, Madam Moderator? Yes. Number two, right. So, the question was, what is this article? This is something that we voted for in 2013. It's to expend up to $24,000 in CPA funds for the required conservation restrictions on land that we either owned or purchased under CPA. So part of CPA is that when you buy open space with CPA money, that you also have to put a conservation restriction on it. What is a conservation restriction? A conservation restriction makes it so that 20 or 30 years from now, when we all forget, when we're not here, and everyone else forgets how it was purchased or why it was purchased, there's a permanent restriction that tells people that it was purchased with CPA money. And that means that we can't go selling it and using the money for something else, like, you know, a new mayor's car at the time, or some, you know, some other reason why you think that that might be possible to do. So that's the reason why. I mean, you may not like it. I don't get excited about spending $24,000 in legal fees and the other things that go along with putting a conservation restriction by these properties, but it's required under the law because it repreaches that way.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Mr. Commissioner, we carry on the way of reception. I'd like to hear an explanation for Mr. Cook or the Finance Board why they're opposed to this, and if they're simply trying to set a tone tonight. I know there's been a lot of controversy with the Conservation and Preservation Act. But I think the Finance Board owes us an explanation why they're opposed to decide.
You put it there.
Yes, all year we've looked at all these different factors with the CPA. And this is a project that was supposed to be done almost three years ago. It wasn't done. And we keep on adding on projects. We keep on adding more things on and on and on. And the books haven't been opened. So we're not seeing everything that's going on, and we're only getting little bits and pieces. And this project has gone on for such a long period that that's the reason we ended up voting down for the unfavorable action, the yea to the no.
Thank you.
Kathy Keston asked, 12, have you tried? I just had a question for our town council, if that's okay? If we do vote this down, not to spend the money, is there any consequence to us, other than not spending the money?
Well, no, the only consequence would be that if you decide you want to do this again, you've got to bring the motion back before town meeting. If you extend the deadline now to 2018, it doesn't have to go back before the CPC. If you voted down, then it would have to start over again. That's a consequence.
Next.
Adam Merrill, please, I'm sorry, who's switched off?
Still confused.
She's not like her husband, she's soft.
You have to almost eat it.
My question is, would you think that the books aren't open in my understanding as correct, there is not money in CPA to find all these projects plus past projects? Is there a problem with CPA funds?
Someone can answer that?
We haven't seen the books. All I can tell you is that there's been a lot of different dealings that have gone on, that we have $1.7 billion sitting there, and we haven't been told all the facts of everything that goes on in CPA land. That's the problem. And this is a project, along with a whole lot of other projects, that never got completed, and we're moving forward to start seven more projects. So until we complete other things, we got to make sure that everything, all our ducks are in a row, and we move forward.
Madam Moderator? Mr. Cook, I see you're setting the pattern for the evening. Can you explain? You people have been meeting for months, I know you work very hard, I know you volunteers. What do you mean the books have not been available to the Finance Board? Can you be a little more specific, please? And why not, if that's the case?
We're only given so much information, and this is what ends up happening. We go to a meeting, and there are times we're told to look online, look at the projects online. I think that hard paperwork should be handed to us with facts and figures, and how the whole project's going to work. We can't just, we can't just be given, look online. And as other aspects, there's a lot of different things that, you know, every day you end up hearing a different thing, that money's being spent here or there. I can't, I'm not telling you that there's a shortage in the books, and I'm not saying anything has been done wrong. All I'm telling you is that these are projects that have been sitting there for almost three years, and they're not completed. And when we're told that there's seven more projects, and they said, well, how many were offered up to be looked at? And they said, seven more projects, and all of them were approved. We just keep on marching forward, but we're not looking back, and we don't look at the actual cost of things. Just because the CPA, as time goes on, is being funded less and less. There's not as much money going to be coming from the state for the match. And as time goes on, we can't look at that we're going to buy an $800,000 or $900,000 piece of property because we have free money. It's not free money, it's 3% tax. And that's, that's what concerns me, is that there's a lot of, a lot of aspects to these things that we don't know what it's costing us. And we need to have put all those things together.
Next.
Mike Dempsey, Chairman of the Community Preservation Commission. I mean, I think that the Finance Board is making some serious accusations here, but frankly, I don't understand how they can say that they don't have enough information because all of the articles tonight were given to them with plenty of time. They also have a representative who's sitting right up here, who's on the Community Preservation Committee. And I would expect that the Finance Board has the ability to look at the town finances just the way I do, to get any reports that you need to look at. So I'm wondering where the disconnect is. And by the way, there's six articles, not seven, this evening. So typically, what you can do is you can, if you're concerned about auditing how CPA funds were spent in prior years, you can ask for a report, a complete report, from our Finance Director, who would be more than happy to give you that report. I have to believe that you haven't seen it. And I'm concerned about that because you're getting up here and you're, you're making some serious accusations.
Oh, you're all right. He said three minutes. When he said no, he could accuse anybody.
Got 1 minute 26 seconds to go. Sorry, if you want to say something, you're going to have to come to the mic.
These were your rules.
I am keeping to the rules, I have timers.
No, I'm talking about the accusation, the violation. They're allowed to have an opinion.
Karen, you've got 1 minute 9 seconds to go. I'll stop it.
Right to you. Okay. So, you know, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying some serious accusations were made about community preservation funds, and I would like somebody to look into it. I would like the Finance Board to look into it because I don't believe there are any anything seriously wrong with the finances.
I've just heard the sound of, who said move the question? I'm sorry, once we've heard that. Okay, then we'll hold the move the question until right after this gentleman speaks. Name and address, please.
Yes, Andrew Wilds, 288 Main Street. My question is to Mr. Dempsey. This money was appropriated at the annual meeting in 2013. My question is, why hasn't that money been expensed?
The reason why it hasn't been expensed is because it, sometimes it takes longer than we plan to do some of these things. This particular thing requires legal efforts, and it's just a matter of, you have to line up lawyers with the, yeah, with the group who's doing the conservation restriction, who is Essex County Green Belt. Essex County Green Belt is a pretty busy organization, doing a lot of CRs for a lot of people. So that's why it hasn't been put in place.
Thank you. We had once gentleman speaking at the mic before we had to close. Okay.
I'm agreeing.
Don't agree.
I just wanted to ask Denise from the town council, do we actually have to put conservation restriction on those properties? Because I know when you were talking, I was on the CPA committee, we talked about buying Stevens, and some of the others. That's a pretty flat piece of land, and I asked at the time why we would keep it for field or formation, but they won't do that till the outcome, Mr.
Madam Moderator, through you, in response to Mr. Green's question, yes, if it's CPC funds, a conservation restriction has to be put on the property.
Thank you. This is the last.
I would ask the citizens to consider passing this measure, because if we don't, what we do is we create a condition where all projects in the future that are created have to be completed within one year. That's not possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We now, we've been called to move the question. Now, if you remember, if you vote yea on this one, you're voting this article down. You're voting it down. If you, if you vote no on this question, you're voting in favor of the article. Is that as clear for everybody? Then we will say, all those in favor of unfavorable action, say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor of favorable action, say aye.
Aye.
I think we made that as clear as mud. We're going to vote on that again. The motion was made for unfavorable action, in other words, to vote this down. Those in favor of unfavorable action to vote this down, say aye.
Aye.
Your turn will come. Those in favor of... Those who do not support unfavorable action, those who do not support unfavorable action, who do not want to vote this down, say aye.
Aye.
I think the second to have it. The unfavorable action is defeated. This article has passed. Now, now that we've made that as clear as mud, uh, so Article Two has passed, I would ask in the future that we try and make this a little clearer. So vote favorable action or unfavorable action. The motion should be made for favorable only. Right. Okay. Article Three, for the veto. This article will extend the...
I have no idea what just happened. My name is Nancy Lindowski, and I'm on Ballot Harris. Sorry. We didn't have an a and a no. I challenged that whole vote.
Madam Moderator. Through you and, uh, questioning, because this was on my suggestion, not the unfavorable motion, but the description. So I'll tell you what happened. Unfavorable motion was moved, seconded, and discussed. Unfavorable motion was defeated. That means that the article as written carried, that it is town meeting's intention that Article Two be voted yes. If there are people who don't understand that, or people who may have voted the wrong way, if you let the moderator know, she has the power and the discretion to have the, uh, the motion revoted so that everyone understands clearly what they're voting for.
My question is, how can both sides vote yes? There was no no in that. Both sides were yes.
That's what you get when you have a negative main motion. And that's why for a long time, we've tried to discourage them in this town. So I think the moderator has asked for future motions not to be negative main motions, to be affirmative main motions. We used to do this a lot, and there was confusion. So I thought we had gotten away from that. But, um, did, did I answer everybody's question? Is there anyone who's dissatisfied, who, who voted in error, or didn't understand why they voted, or what they voted for?
Thank you. Okay. So let's, let's see if we can move along in this video now. Article Three regarding the veto. Uh, this article will extend the original deadline of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, for three, by three years for this critical preservation project for the veto. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Unfavorable action.
Favorable.
Move favorable.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for favorable action. Discussion? There being no discussion, we will vote. So when you vote favorable action, you're voting in favor of this, okay? Those in favor of Article Three regarding the veto, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Majority. Article Four. To extend, basically to extend the CPF for seventy thousand dollars for the Shannon-Hamfield bathrooms. This article will extend the original deadline of June the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, by three years. Selectmen recommend? Finance?
Favorable.
Favorable.
Someone move? Moved and seconded? Moved and seconded in favorable action. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote. Vote. Those in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Thank you. Five. This article has several transfers. Please, if you take a moment to read them. The articles are submitted by the various departments on request. I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the audience who wants to discuss any one of those items? Pardon? Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance? Favorable.
Favorable.
Moved? Some are moved and seconded in favorable action. Discussion now. So is there anyone who wishes to discuss any items on this article? Any particular line on it? There being none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Unanimous. I'd like someone to make the motion to close this camp at a special town meeting.
No.
First, maiden seconded, all in favor of closing the special, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The special is closed. Ten. Thank you. Move on to the annual town meeting. Ann?
To Robert J. Melowitz, Chief of Police of the Town of Groveland and the County of Essex. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, who are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote at the annual town meeting to meet at the Dr. Elmer S. Baghout School, 253 School Street, Groveland, Mass., on Monday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, at seven thirty p.m. To vote on Article One, to see if the town will vote or for Selectmen to petition the state for Chapter Ninety road funds. Articles submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Will someone move? Moved and seconded for favorable action. Any discussion? All in favor of Article One, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article Two. We have, I think someone has an amendment from here.
Madam Moderator, I have an amendment. The Board of Selectmen made a motion to amend Article Two by changing the dollar amount to two hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Folks, the reason we're making this recommendation is that the three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-four that we see in the document was all of last year's Chapter Ninety expenditures. Chapter Nineties is for our roads. And that's the default number we need to use until we get an updated number that will apply for the current fiscal year. We just received that number Friday. That's the number we're seeing here. So respectfully, it has to be considered allowing the, uh, the passed with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is how this works. We first vote on the new amount, two thousand, one hundred, two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. We vote that as the new amount that's going in this article. Then we vote on Article Two as amended. Okay? Hope I'm making it clear this time. Those in favor of the new amount, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Those who, um, the ayes have it. We have voted in favor unanimously of the amendment. Now we're voting Article Two as amended with the new amount, two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Moved and seconded in favorable action. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote. Those in favor of amended Article Two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous aye. Article Three. To vote, uh, for nine hundred dollars for the VFW. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Moved and seconded in favorable action. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article Three for the VFW, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous aye. Article Four. It's a real hard one, this. It's to accept thirty-five thousand from the Electric Department, uh, Municipal Electric Department Operation Account, uh, to reduce the tax rate. Think you have a hard time thinking about this one. Articles submitted by the Finance Director. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Moved and seconded for favorable. Any discussion? Those in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Thank you. Article Five is the omnibus. For those who are not, who have not done this before, the omnibus budget is for the, basically, the finances of the running of the town. The way we do this is, I just read to you the general, the headings for each section. If there is anything in any section that you wish to discuss, you shout out, "Hold." Is that clear? Okay. So, we'll get into general government. Moderator. Selectmen. Finance Department. Which section? Is that under Selectmen? That's hold on. Yes, I'm just gonna lift the heading.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, so we've got a hold on Selectmen's heading. Finance Department. Town Accountants. Board of Recessors. Town Council. Technology. Town Clerk. Conservation Commission. Planning and Engineering. ZBA. Municipal Buildings. Insurance. Public Safety. Did I hear a hold then? Okay. Public Safety. And the Police Department are gathered, right? Parking Clerk. Fire Department. The Fire Department goes over the page. Inspectors. Civil Defense. Animal Control. Hold. Education. That's schools. Did I hear a hold? Yeah. Make sure you shout it out. Hold on Education. Public Works, Tree Warden. Highways. Rubbish Collection. Cemetery Commission. Cemetery Commission. Human Civices. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Veterans. Library. Debt Service. Unclassified. And that's it for this article. What we do now is we go back to the beginning. And the first hold is on Selectmen's, Selectmen's section. Who, who called that hold? Please, please come to the mic. And what I'd recommend to save time is, if you've called a hold on any of these articles, make your way up to the mics, either mic, right now. Thank you. It'll save us a lot of time. Thank you. You must use the mic.
The mic's not working. Nancy Lewandowski was the Administrative Assistant. She had a salary. There is no department requesting zero, and now it's twenty thousand. All I need is an explanation about...
What happened?
Good, that one. Would someone like to make an...
And who's working for twenty grand? Or forty grand left?
Uh, you asked your question, so we can then... Mr. Hodges. Nancy retired in September. And, um, Nancy's salary was approximately sixty-six thousand dollars. We have a new Finance Director slash Personnel Director. She has assumed a lot of Nancy's duties. And we, in turn, felt that we could hire a part-time person to assist Denise in the role that Nancy did a lot of work in. Between the two people, we felt we could cover that. So, that's, Nancy has retired, and we were going to acknowledge her retirement this evening. You're welcome.
Um, Bill Dunn, Selectmen. In, in the process of this, um, I was a strong believer in, the Town of Groveland has never had anyone in charge of personnel as long as I've been here, since nineteen eighty-six. So I was probably one of the biggest pushers for this. And I, that's my main reason. We have nobody in town that does personnel or not. Any of the, anyone in town, oh, public safety, whatever. And that's what I was a strong believer in. So I, I'm a hundred percent for it. And I, and I, I questioned Denise in my deliberations, and I think she's the right person. I'm staying by it a hundred percent. Thank you.
Who's on for the next hold? Oh, there is any other questions about the Personnel Director? No? No? The next hold was on for the Police Department. Ah, sorry. Sorry. I jumped ahead here. Finance Department. Who did the hold for that? You, okay?
Daniel Macdonald, I would like to welcome him. I question the fifteen thousand dollar increase in the doctor's pay. I understand that she's been on the job a little over a year. My understanding is also that the, in terms of fiscal, um, you know, just restraint and that we have a budget to live under. The rest of the town employees have been held to a two percent remuneration in their payroll. So I question the, uh, the need for the fifteen thousand dollar pay raise after one year on the job, but are there always the fairness to the rest of the employees in the town?
Thank you for your question. Again, to back what I said a minute ago, um, our Finance Director just took on two new roles that were Nancy Lewandowski's roles. And she's taken on two of those roles. And that's where we arrived at the dollar amount we did for the Finance Director to get that raise. It wasn't, everyone in the town had a two percent raise. Granted, they did. This was taken on two new roles. One of them was personnel, and the other was legal. And it's not all of the money that was, well, an ex, you know, person in a position. So I think that's why we went the way we did.
And for, um, does it make sense to pay a Finance Director to do our secretarial duties? That lies use of our town council. Why wouldn't you just, um, if there are administrative tasks, uh, tasks to be done, such as human resources, why don't you hire, um, somebody to do what Nancy used to do and just fill that role to a full-time capacity and pay somebody less than any funding as a director's salary, a couple thousand dollars a week? Also bear in mind that New Groveland is a business small town. Um, for instance, um, the Mayor of PD makes a hundred and five thousand dollars. The Mayor of Sale makes less than a hundred and five thousand dollars. The Mayor of Beverly makes less than a hundred and five thousand dollars. So effectively, you're trying to create a town administrator or a town manager with the title of Finance Director.
Moderator, legally cannot do that, Mr. McDonald, because we have to stay within the con...
the confines of the law as written. It's a state law that created the Finance Director. However, within the law, there is some opportunity to add some items to the job description. Now, very specifically, we did have a very remarkable person that did her job very, very well, and it went way beyond Secretarial. We identified on the Board of Selectmen eight areas. I don't have that list with me, but we can make it available to anyone through the Finance Director's job description. Those eight areas basically referred to these three important areas of work. One of them was, as Mr. Dunn already mentioned, was Personnel. We needed to have someone that was on the job five days a week, someone that could be responsible for the Personnel of the, of the, of the town employees. Do I have a better word? The other significant area of responsibility that we did not hire her for is to actually interact with legal counsel on a myriad of issues. We need a go-between, between the Board of Selectmen and Town Council, someone who can bring information to us, and also that can transfer information to our Town Council on a number of issues, including litigation, and including contracts especially, very big area. That was an area that was done by our former Secretary, and she did a great job, and we needed to transfer that to somebody else. So between Personnel and Legal, those are the two biggest, and we have eight of those big things like that. Eight things that we didn't hire her to do. Now, when we take sixty-six thousand dollars that we used to pay, and now we're gonna pay twenty thousand, and we give the Finance Director the extra salary, what we're saving? What was the number? About thirty thousand dollars. So it's a win-win for the town. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald? Excuse me, sir. Is there anyone else? I, I don't want to make this just a personal question here. Thank you.
Steve, I have a question. I have a lot of experience dealing with the town now, based on all the soccer and different sports that I do. My problem is that any time you put things in, you're putting way too much on one purse, and that's a big issue. Way too many things are being put on the use of children. And it is just too much, and I think that you should rethink that, and put the money towards the admin, because admin is someone that we need for forty hours a week, because several of us are trying to get hold of people we can't get hold of. And it's taking a lot longer than last six months than it's ever. Nancy and I will respond by within forty-eight hours. I'm waiting weeks, and several other people are active, and that's not a good thing. So, you need that admin position more than you need the increase.
Thank you. Is there anyone here would like to make a comment on this?
Steve? Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
That twenty thousand dollars will be, we haven't been able to hire that person as yet, and a lot of those connections you needed to make, as, as far as fields, use, scheduling, any glitches that might come up, that person will be in place as soon as we go through this budget process.
But that's a very light, you know, for anyone in this day and age, forty-hour work is not going to be twenty thousand dollars a year.
No, we're not talking, we're not talking forty hours.
Which is exactly my point. We, we both know, I mean, Nancy did forty, forty hours a week, and you need someone in a forty-hour position.
Well, I'll have to tell you, Denise Demkowsky is at her desk at six-thirty every morning.
I don't doubt that, but I think she's got way too much.
Well, we made this decision, we're confident that it will work out, and I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
So, any other comments, different comments? Thank you. So we've done the hold on Selectmen Finance Department. We've done that. The next hold was Police. Who was the person called to hold on Police?
On all these twenty-two Governor's Roads. Can you hear me? Probably not. You know, of all these people here, we ought to have the microphone work.
They are supposed to be tested by, before we get them put up.
I'll talk loud. My question is, it's about a thirty-seven thousand dollar difference between what's requested from the reserves and what's the Finance Board recommends. And I'd like to hear from the Finance Board why they're recommending thirty-seven thousand dollars less than what was requested.
Thank you. Someone from the Finance Board would like to respond?
Just because the full-time police officer was put onto the department, so they, there's less of a line item for the reserves.
Any other questions on that hold? There being none, we'll go on to the next hold, which was Animal Control Officer. Who put a hold on that?
I did, I'd like to take that back.
You have, you're on to take it back?
Yes, it says, I didn't see it. Who did it in the Police Department budget?
You're canceling the hold, in other words?
I'm canceling the hold.
Next hold is Education. Who called the hold on Education?
Right here.
Oh, thank you.
Debbie Webster, forty-five Wood Street. Just wanted to point out, I do know that the School Committee in Kentucky Regional did say that their budget increase was only two point something percent. But I do want to point out that this percent increase is six percent for education. Two point eight is attributed to New Whittier. Six point three is attributed to Kentucky. I understand, have done a good job as far as how they budget. The problem is, their budget is so much bigger than ours, that two percent of their budget is much more than two percent of our budget. So, I just wanted to point out, you have a two-and-a-half percent levy limit increase plus new growth. These numbers, even though I know the School Committee's trying, but even on our side, out of our pocket, it's a six percent increase on this side of the budget. School budget currently is sitting at sixty-five percent of the budget, and probably will go higher for this and this year. I just want to point out, a lot of people are complaining about their taxes. There are multiple reasons for it. One of the major players, our education. Education is getting more expensive. It isn't cheap to do, it isn't cheap to keep a good school system. But by the same token, I just want people to be careful of trying to shift when they complain about their taxes going up. You can't look at a six percent increase, this is a five-hundred thousand dollar increase on our total budget. That's a big number. So, I just don't want people to think that it's other things. Education is a huge part of our budget. And I just wanted to point out that last year it was a five percent increase, this year it's a six point three for us. We're not talking about what the budget went on, we're talking about us, the town of Groveland. So I just want people to be aware of what can we see we'd be doing year, year after year, and I don't see it getting any better, I see it growing exponentially.
Name and address, please.
Just know who I am, Mr. McDonald. John Offord, three First Street. I'm concerned about the way we're handling this article. In the past, we've gone through this process, and we all talk about what we don't like, and what, everybody hears it, whatever. And at the end of the process, we're supposed to pass it. There's something wrong with this system. I do not like the way this is set up. It's set up so that we are obligated to pass this piece of legislation, and we even, whatever you say, doesn't make any difference. That bothers me.
Would anyone like to respond to that? Anyone on the Finance? No? Anyone from the School Committee?
Kathy Kestrel, South Philly Drive. I thought in the past that when we called the hold, we then voted that budget. I believe that's what we did in the past. We voted those departments as we went through it, and then we voted the adjusted bottom line. I feel like that's what we did.
No, sorry. Any more discussion on that item? Then we're on to Debt Service. Highways, sorry. Highways, yeah.
Basically, the question is the same. There's about forty thousand dollar difference between what's requested, what the Finance Committee recommended, Tom Foley, twenty-two Governor's Road. So I'd like to hear from the Finance Committee why the difference.
The Highway Department ended up asking for, they were actually looking for two extra workers, and they got one, and that's why that changed. They got one extra full-time employee.
To Debt Service? Someone called a hold on that? You have to speak up, sir.
I just want to clarify, what is, what is the one debt that's being serviced, but it's not a square, you know, for what it's concerned, it's like for the Finance Department.
Would you like to explain that again to the Finance?
It was simple, what is it for?
The debt service.
I can actually answer that, then Moderator, if you'd like. The debt service is the Center Street. So what was purchased on the Center Street, we have to actually budget for it, and then we recoup it under the taxes, because it's a debt exclusion piece.
That was not borne through CVC, CDK funds.
It was not, that's correct.
Any other questions on the debt service? If that is all the discussion, we're ready to vote on the articles now. Sorry, we've, we've already got someone, the question came a little late. We've had, moved a question here.
No, sir.
Okay?
I just want to know which column we're voting on.
We're voting on? We're voting on the Finance Board's recommendations. That is the right-hand column. Discussion is closed, because someone moved the question. Okay, we are voting on? No, once it's moved the question. Is there any, okay, as I'm told, the Moderator has discretion. Is there anything new to be offered before we vote on this?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
You have to go to the, sorry Debbie, you have to go to the mic. But it has to be new, new information.
Yep, it is new. I would like, the total increase from fiscal fifty to the Finance Board's recommendation is one million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and one dollars. I'd like the Finance Board to tell me where that's coming from, because this is just the omnibus. So we haven't gotten to the other spending articles. So where is the one million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and one coming from?
Finance? They're praying.
Hey, I also work in the Assessors' Office, let me see if I can explain it.
Well, I was just, I was just gonna say, it's the tax bill you sent out, that's how it's gonna, the tax bills you sent out are gonna pay you.
We levied eleven million out of our levy increase, that we can, you know, increase the bills per the levy sheet, will be three hundred thousand. New growth in Milwaukee, given any construction in town. Being generous, will be a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's now four hundred and fifty thousand. Where is the other five hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from?
We're gonna get new mics next year. I, I'm gonna refer to the Finance Director, a comment on that, because that's her expertise side of the budget. She can explain a lot better than I can.
Sure, so this is a combination of increased revenue coming in on estimated receipts, the Assessors, Board of Assessors released money in overlay. A portion of, so the three hundred and fifty thousand, the debt service is completely coming off of the tax bills next year. So people will be paying that, that was voted last year. So that three hundred and fifty thousand actually comes off the increase you're looking at, Debbie, because that's through debt exclusion. So that's really where, so through taxes, overlay reserve, and increase in receipts is what we make up that thing.
Any other questions? Calling once?
Yes, yes, yes.
Twice?
Yes.
Just made it.
When you talk about the overlay, that's a reserve account through the Assessors' Office, correct? How much are you tapping into reserves to plug that hole in the, in the budget?
Devin, a hundred and ninety-five thousand. We actually have, the state does not like us to have excess in that reserve account. We have many, many years outstanding, so once those taxes are paid off, we should be releasing that annually back into the budget.
Well, you also need to do that next year.
We will. It should be a process that happens every year.
Thank you. I think we'll call this to a close now. We are now voting on the Finance Board's recommendations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That's seemed a little bit fuzzy, so let's try it one more time, otherwise we'll have a hand code, all right? Those in favor of the Finance Board's recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
I think the ayes have it. Is there anybody disputing that? The ayes have it, then, thank you.
Madam Moderator. What I would like to, in terms of, Kathy said that next year when we do this, if we went back and did it the way we used to, every time there was a hold, we would vote yea or nay on the hold, and then we'd have someone who was keeping track of what we're adding, what we're subtracting. Then we get a final count, as opposed, because actually, not one single person should have held anything, everything upon which it's passed. And that's exactly what John wants for next year.
For the new Moderator, thank you. This is my last night. Thank you. Yes, we haven't done it that way for a long time, but it might be time for a change. Time for a change for me. Yes. Yes. Uh, we're on. Moving right ahead. Stay with me, folks. Article six, the Water Department. To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate $883,798 for the use of the Water Department to be offset by Water Department revenues. Water and Sewer Commissioners recommend...
Favorable action.
Favorable. Selectmen?
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable?
Me.
Hold on. Let me just wait. Finance Board?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable. Uh, discussion?
Madam Moderator, the majority vote for the deal. Board of Selectmen on this is unfavorable. If I bring the town's attention to the superintendent's line, what we felt strongly about was that the numbers presented here were appropriate, with the exception of the superintendent's salary. Superintendent is actually paid from two different areas. One is water, and the other one is sewer. If you take a look at foot of page, and you take a look at page 7, just the yellow light number there. So what we wanted to do is to pass this or ask for you to consider allowing this article to pass as amended, meaning with a 2.5% increase in salary. And that's why we have the highlighted items. So if you'll see, for fiscal year '16, $63,000 is the superintendent's salary requested. And we are suggesting a 2.5% increase instead, which is $60,942. And if you just flip the page for a moment and take a look at superintendent's salary from the other department, $26,967 was requested, but we are recommending a 2.5% increase instead. By no means whatsoever is this a decision on the quality of work, the commitment of the individual. Strictly a fiscal decision, a very difficult one that we've taken, and we hope it takes support. Thank you. One question was asked, why 2.5 and not 2? Just made that decision. Thank you, Mr. Osborne, for your comment. Appreciate it. Mr. Osborne said that 2.5 was a bad decision. 2 would have been better, but we decided on 2.5. But thank you for your comment.
Finance Board recommends... What do you recommend?
At the time of the printing, we weren't able to put in our Finance Board recommends. You'll see that in column plan. We recommended a 2% in both of those. We had no issue with the other salaries, just 2% in the superintendent line and on both Water Department's. Right now, we're on Water.
So if you wish to recommend a different amount, you have to make an amendment to this article. Someone has to make an amendment. An amendment has been made by Ms. Castanella to amend the superintendent's salary down to $60,645.12. I need a second on that.
Second.
Second. Then we are going to vote just on this.
Wait, 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 wait. Do we have a discussion?
Yes, when we vote... We're gonna have a discussion, sorry. When we vote, that's what you're going to be voting on first. And then we will vote on the whole Article six. Discussion.
Jim Gino, Representative Roland Mads, Roland, Water and Sewer. Todd Kusik has been employed with us for seven years. A brief snapshot of some of the things that we've accomplished, these accomplishments that I've been involved with. 800 feet of gravel so up the Kentucky school system. Another 800 feet of gravel so up Ohio Avenue. 6,000 feet of road... 6,000 feet of road reconstruction on Main Street. A new sewer destination for Baghead School. A new skating system. A new 800,000 gallon water tank and a new 3,000 12-inch water main. Rehab of a 7 million gallon grid, a pump station. 3.6 megawatt solar site that we put in in Zone 1 aquifer. The town now receives $23,000 annually for that project. It's an asset. The difference between 2 and 6 is $3,400. We fit it into our budget. It's not increased, it's not an increase. We've taken it from the yellow line items. Can I ask you a support?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hold on, if there's anyone else, we want to make sure that we give everybody a chance. Anyone else? All right. Okay.
People are about to stand and pull us a lot because Finance Director gave 50 million while raising money into the job. Somebody was getting busted in the bus for seven years. We're doing a good job. I take on additional responsibility. I want my $4,000 all, and we can't have it. You know? All for the equal, but some of them are already permanent.
Was there any further discussion? There being none, we're going to vote on the amendment first. That that amount for the superintendent goes to $60,645.12. Don't forget the 12 cents. All those in favor of that amount, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. So we go back to the original amounts in Article six, which will be the, um... The original amount, $883,798 total. Those in favor of that amount, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We're on to Article seven. This is the second half of Sewer, Water and Sewer. To see if the town will vote to raise the permanent $522,643 for the use of the Sewer Department to be offset by Sewer Department revenue. Water and Sewer Commissioners recommend?
Favorable action.
Selectmen? Selectmen?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable. Finance?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable action. Move favorable action. Now discussion.
Got moved and seconded in favorable. Do you want to discuss?
The Water and Sewer budget split 70/30. 70 Water, 30% of it is Sewer. It's the same, it's the same one. It's a... He gets an increase of 70% out of one, and the other 30 comes out of the Sewer budget.
Any further discussion? Finance Board want to discuss anything? No? Okay. So you were voting on the fiscal '16 budget, Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Over to Article eight. This Article eight basically is fixing the salaries and compensation for elected and appointed officers as according to Article five to seven above. Selectmen recommend? Finance?
Favorable action.
Moved in second in favorable. Uh, any discussion? No?
Normally, before we start the meeting, we used to always thank all our town employees, all the appointed committees, all the boards. Just want to thank all those people for all the work you do for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now going to vote on Article eight. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Nine. To see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from the Water Enterprise retained earnings to replace water mains on Governor's Road, et cetera. Articles submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Moved in second in favorable. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote.
Joan Donnelly, 500, Roland Mads. The only thing I wanted to say before... Is that when we've replaced these lines in the roads that then afterwards they rip them up and, you know, they trowel and then rip them up and put the mains in. So I would really like them to consider not doing the pipes and not doing it properly.
Any other discussion? There being no further discussion, we'll vote on it. Governor's Road water mains. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes unanimous. Ten. See if the town will vote to appropriate necessary funds for the following projects. Town hall technology, lawnmower, replace a line cruiser, and shelter central fire station doors to a total of $96,659. Each item above will be a separate appropriation submitted by the Capital Improvement. The BURD project is recommended by the Capital Improvement Committee. And for further details, look at the back of your annual report. You'll find an appendix for the CIC report. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Moved in second in favorable. Any discussion? There being none, we will vote on Article 10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Majority. Eleven. For this article, we need a 2/3rd vote. To see if the town will vote to appropriate necessary funds for the following projects. Basically, replacement of the Police Department Communication Console and the Fire Department's aerial ladder truck to a total of $910,000. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Discussion? Okay. As it's bonding language, I have to read the full motion here. That the town appropriates $910,000 for the purpose of financing the BURD projects, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. That meet this appropriation, the Finance Director with approval of Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $910,000 and issue bonds or notes of the town they care under the pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 8, or any other enabling authority. And that the Board of Selectmen and any other appropriate town officials are authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out these projects. That's a formality that is required for bonding. Any discussion? Pardon? There was a motion made.
Discussion, yes?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Have you heard it, ma'am? Daniel McCall.
We'll hold it a second, sir. Just to make sure, did we have a motion?
No.
No.
Favorable, and did we have a second?
No.
We did. I think we did have, but we're going to make sure. Yes, we have now. Go ahead, sir.
My question is, they seem unrelated, the appropriations, the Communication Console we may very well need. If that's 911 service, absolutely. Um, the aerial ladder, so a different issue. My question is, why weren't these separate warrants so that we could vote on them individually? And if it's possible, I'd like the motion to split this into two separate votes to vote on those individually. It seems like you muddled the water by putting two... I mean, you might as well have just put, you know, rest on it, put it in there too.
Thank you, sir. Would someone like to answer that?
Madam Moderator, for you in response to the question from the floor from Mr. McDonald, you could do that. You could divide them into two. And you could have a separate motion to bond the $160,000 and vote on that, and then have a follow-up motion to vote on or bond $750,000. You could do that if that's a pleasure of town meeting. Or you could just discuss the two of them at the same time. Either way, whatever your pleasure is.
Is there the wish of the voters here to separate these two?
Yes.
Those... Okay, let's have a vote on that. Those in favor of separating the two, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of separating the two, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Those not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, let's try again. Those in favor of separating the two, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of separating the two, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, well, because of this, we're gonna have to have a hand count. Unless, uh... I'm going to do this one more time and try... I'm trying to avoid a hand count if we can. Those in favor of separating these two articles, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of separating the two articles, say no.
No.
Think the ayes have it. Now, we're back to square one here. Let me explain this. We now have to separate Article 11 into Part 1 and Part 2.
Madam Moderator, someone said challenge back here.
I was here.
You have a challenge? You challenged that if the ayes won?
Yes.
So you want to have a hand count? Okay, if seven people challenged... Okay, if seven people challenge it, we can have a hand count, but we need seven people to challenge. Put your hand up if you wish to challenge. One, okay. Just hold on a minute, I'm trying to count, see if we've got seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, we have seven. Okay. Now, someone, I have to finish. Mr. Osborne, be quiet. That man in the front row, take him out. Was someone asking a point of order over there? Can't hear you, Kathy.
I wanted to know.
You'll have to come to the mic.
Kathy Kessler, my question is simple. We're voting on an article that's not on the law, we're now voting to divide an article, and I thought the town council said that you had the discretion to decide this. Did I mishear that? Does the moderator have the discretion to split the article, or do we have to vote to split the article? What's the law say?
The moderator has the discretion to put the matter of splitting article to town meeting floor. Moderator wouldn't split it herself. She has the discretion and her power of control of meeting of putting to a vote whether town meeting wishes to split the article. Yeah. I think, does that answer your question, Kathy?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Which we did. So, we now have seven people who are on more who wish to have this voted on with a hand count, basically. So, Don, would you help me now? You need to do that. Thank you. And did you arrest these people? Okay. And those, those in favor of splitting this article into two, please raise your hand. And you're going to count that side, Don Gray is going to count this side. Once you've counted, put your hand down. Okay, those not in favor of splitting this article, please put your hands up. Quiet, gentlemen. Those in favor of splitting, one oh five, those not in favor, eighty-four. The splitters have it. Okay? To split. To split or not to split, that was the question, and you have voted to split. So now, we are going to vote on the police department communications console, and I have to read that article again, right? And, to split or... For that amount. Okay. I can do that, I think. Now, please listen carefully. I need to have someone who voted in favor of the split to read the bottom of Article eleven where it says a motion, the town appropriates, et cetera, et cetera, but you have to put in the one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand instead of the nine-hundred-and-ten-thousand. So, we need somebody from the winning side, the split side, to read that. I think we have someone coming? Okay? We didn't need to have two-thirds, just a majority. Okay, we did not need two-thirds vote for the split, but you need a two-thirds vote now for this article. I need someone to read Article eleven with the new number, one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand in it, and it cannot be me. Gentlemen of the moment.
Article eleven motion that the town appropriate one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for the purpose of financing the above projects, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the finance director with approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes of the town therefore under pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, section eight, or any other enabling authority. The board of selectmen, any other appropriate town officials are authorized to take any other actions necessary or convenient to carry out these projects.
Madam Moderator, for you, sir, this is my mistake. What we, I told the moderator, what we need is a vote for the one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars just as you did, but instead of saying financing the above projects, you have to identify the specific one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar project. So it would be for the replacement of the communications console. And then in the second motion for the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, whoever makes that motion will do exactly the same thing. You'll put in the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar amount, but you will say it is for the aerial ladder truck. I'm sorry, so, so, we're going to call this, I think we're calling it Article eleven, part one, and Article eleven, part two. So, Mr. McDonald or whoever would have to read, move the first part of Article eleven and state, instead of saying financing the above projects, state what the project is. Have I made that clear?
It says financing the above projects will substitute financing, replacement of communications console.
Right.
Article eleven motion that the town appropriate one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for the purpose of financing, replacement of communications console, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the finance director with approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes of the town therefore under pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, section eight, or any other enabling authority. The board of selectmen, any other appropriate town officials are authorized to take any other actions necessary or convenient to carry out these projects.
Thank you. It gets a little complicated, but we have to do it in a formal way. Thank you so much for doing that. Though, is there any discussion on this? Have we had a motion? Okay, we need a motion to move this. Move and, pardon? Moved and seconded, so is there any more discussion on this? I hope it's very clear that you're just, you're voting on the communications console for the police department only, and then we'll go on to part two. Those in favor of this article, part one, communications console, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
Majority. We, it's, we need a two-thirds, so I think we definitely had more than two-thirds. Let's do that one more time. Those in favor of part one say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
I think we have a two-thirds, we have a two-thirds there. I don't think that was close. Now we're on to part two, same again. The fire department aerial ladder truck, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and it's someone who voted to split this article into two, to read this article with the new amounts, putting seventy-five, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in, instead. Do we have someone who's willing to do that? The same gentleman, we'll have to put you on the payroll. Article eleven motion.
Article eleven motion that the town appropriates seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purpose of financing aerial ladder truck, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the finance director with approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, issue bonds or notes of the town therefore under pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, section eight, or any other enabling authority. The board of selectmen, any other appropriate town officials are authorized to take any other actions necessary or convenient to carry out these projects.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? That was a motion, do we have a second? All right. Now, any more discussion on this? You're voting for an aerial ladder truck for the fire department? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
The majority have it. Has to be two-thirds. Sorry. Was there someone who wanted to discuss then? I'm very sorry, I'm slipping tonight. Is there anyone else other than, give him a chance. No, 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 he's had a little chance.
Kirk Rochelle, sixteen Union Street, Robin, I'm the captain of the central fire station. We're looking for a new ladder truck to replace our nineteen-eighty-one truck. That truck was purchased in, about seventeen years ago. It's been on the capital improvements list for, since two thousand and five, was supposed to originally be replaced in two thousand and twelve, and now we're here in two thousand and fifteen to get the vote to upgrade that piece of fire apparatus. We're looking to buy value, something that's going to serve the town for a good twenty-five years.
Mr. McDonald?
I have a question, we could find a well-cost solution that meets the needs of the town and is safe and meets the safety standards. I was wondering if I could move the table that so the town could explore other options and to get a second opinion on whether it's necessary to buy a brand-new ladder truck for the town to go. Apparently they last a long time, you know, nineteen-eighty-one. You know, it lasts up to ten years, fifteen years old, very long time, and we wouldn't have to get deep on debt in this town, and we seem to have a problem with debt that seems to be negative channeling now if they just borrow it and throw it on the building. So I'd like to, like outside the box a little bit, and I ask you to move the table that, if that's possible.
To, to vote to table this, in other words, take it art of discussion, we need a two-thirds vote, and we also need a second. Is there someone who wishes to, to second Mr. McDonald's motion to table? Did someone say that? Second, okay. So there's a second to vote to table this article. So... No discussion on tabling. No discussion on tabling. So that closes down discussion, and, sorry, gentlemen, we can only carry on discussion if the article to table does not pass. So if you are going to table this article, you're taking it out of discussion and you're basically voting it no for the CIC. Right? Is that clear?
No.
Okay. Those in favor of tabling the article say aye.
Aye.
Those, those not in favor of tabling the article say no.
No.
I think the noes have it. So the article is not tabled, it's back end of discussion, and we now have this gentleman to discuss, sir.
Jeff Pettus, thirty-fourth Center Street, Capital Improvement Committee. This purchase has been batted back and forth, we've been considering this for a long time. A lot of consideration went into it again this year. We met with the selectmen multiple times, with the fire department and the fire chief, and the finance committee. We all mulled it over, we looked at all kinds of options, even sharing services with another town. We looked at any, a lot of different solutions to this, and really, it just comes down to we need a ladder truck. It's part, it's going to be part of the core equipment for the fire department. The one that we currently have is thirty-four years old, it's not in good shape, it's ready to go any time. If it does, we're going to be in a very precarious position, and the safety of the fire department is actually an issue, because if the equipment can fail, and even if it does fail and goes out of service, then they're going to have to use hand ladders to climb up on someone's roof when the house is burning. So I would ask you to support the purchase of the new fire truck.
I don't think I used my three minutes last time, so I just had a couple more comments. There was a committee, about eight of us, that went through this for the past eight months, and we sat down with everyone involved. There was many meetings regarding this, and one of the issues we're going to be looking at, and we looked at it last fall, was the purchase of a demo truck. And what a demo truck is, is the manufacturer makes trucks, and then they drive them around the country, and they show them off. When they get ready, ready to build a new one, they sell those off. So, and they sell them off at a reduced price. But the key thing is, the truck goes back to the manufacturer, gets certified as new. So when we purchase it, we get a discount, and we're getting a certified new truck. Those a few and five between, they go very quickly when they come up our market. So we have to be ready to jump on those opportunities. Last fall, we had an opportunity, a truck was like six-hundred-thousand, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, that truck was gone within two weeks, and we had to have the money ready to go. In the purchase of the used fire apparatus, everyone has very short memories. The last truck we bought, it took us three years to get the bug's work out of that truck. It was out of service more than it was in service. It's all about spending money wisely and purchasing a truck that's going to serve the community. And actually, the committee, we came up with a truck that was eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, that's the truck the committee wanted originally. It's a bucket truck, we're probably going to go with the straight lap, I won't bore you with the differences between the two. But we looked at what the town needed with all the committees involved over the last eight months, and we came up with a good decision, and to spend your money wisely to keep us safe and do the job that you're paying us to do. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, we got someone up there standing.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Madam Moderator, respectfully, townspeople, I, there's some of us that like to call ourselves fiscally conservative, it's a very popular label, but some of us fall into the trap of becoming fiscally austere, and austerity is a very dangerous thing when it comes to public safety. Just a few warrants ago, I just decided to vote for additional policemen, and that was a good thing. The fire department has been toying around with this idea since two thousand and five. We can afford it, it will not require an override.
We can afford it, it will not require an override. Any debt and financing that does occur will be able to be absorbed as part of the overall budget. What do we buy for 750,000? If we're lucky, we'll be able to buy a demo ladder truck that has a cab at the end of it, and possibly also a ladder that two men can go up at the same time, instead of one man on top of another person. So we have the safety of the men first driving this decision. We also have the safety of our citizens. Thankfully, we don't have a lot of fires, but when there is one, we want to make sure that our guys can show up, be safe, and get other people safe. Thank you.
Move the question.
The board, move the question, it's been seconded.
Second. Microphone.
Sorry. I'm getting sloppy here. Once we hear move the question and it's seconded, that brings the end of discussion. We are now voting on part two of Article 11, the Fire Department aerial ladder truck for 750,000. Those in favor of buying the ladder truck, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
I think we have a majority there. And that's definitely over the two-thirds. Thank you. Hang in there, guys. Twelve, to vote to accept provisions of general laws, et cetera, et cetera, that would authorize a town to establish another post-employment benefits liability trust fund submitted by the Finance Director. Would the Finance Director like to comment on this? What, in a moment. Board of Selectmen, first. Recommend, oh, sorry, motion? Any day now. Someone like to make a motion? Move favorable. Favorable act. Board of Selectmen, did we have a second to that?
Yeah.
Second. Board of Selectmen, recommend?
Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable.
Discussion? Would anyone like to explain this, or does anyone need an explanation? Please, Denise.
So this is for other post-employment benefits, which means health insurance for our future retirees. So we currently have an unfunded liability of 3.4 million dollars that our rating agencies and audit starts to look at and shows as an unfunded liability. So the first step in starting to fund this, to show that the town is serious in funding this mandate, is to create the trust. So we don't have any money going into the trust, we are simply establishing the trust. Then in years in the future, hopefully we can commit a certain dollar amount of reserves to go into this, so that we're not coming up with 3.4 million dollars out of money.
Any other questions? Discussion? There being none, we will vote on Article 12 to set up this benefits liability trust fund. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 13, regarding VZ Park, to re-authorize VZ Memorial Park revolving fund. The Conservation Commission shall give a report at the annual town meeting. Let's see. The purpose of this fund is for the Conservation Commission to pay operating costs of VZ Memorial Park. Do I have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Favorable.
Can we hear with the side with the same?
Yeah, recommend, a selectman recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable. Is someone moving?
Moving favorable.
Move favorable. Is there a second to that? Move and seconded favorable. Discussion on VZ? Please come down. No, you can't. We have rules.
Justin Gordon, one walk drive. I'd like to know why the Finance Committee votes unfavorable.
Thank you.
There was an increase of $10,000 in the past year, they spent more than $80,000, so I don't know why there was a $10,000 increase.
Any other questions? Discussion? Oh, we're sorry.
When I evaluate any of the CPA or CPC articles, I take a look at it with three tests. The first one...
You already heard it.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Well, I'm not going to be live, so we can erase that. Sorry.
Any other discussion? Then we'll move the vote. Those in favor of the VZ Park article, Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Majority.
Article vote, Article 14, the Pines Recreation Boat Ramp Revolving Fund. Move and seconded favorable action. Board of Selectmen, recommend?
Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable.
It's been moved and seconded for favorable action. Any other discussion? We'll vote on this. To authorize the Pines Recreation Boat Ramp Fund. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Fifteen, the Zoning Board of Appeals Revolving Fund. Articles submitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Board of Selectmen, recommend?
Favorable.
Finance Board?
Favorable.
Move and seconded for favorable. Any discussion? Yes? Name and address, sir.
By George Street, Gordon. I have a report for the fiscal year 214, excuse me. The report that's affected as of April 27, 2015. And we had one special permit for our Inlaw Department, six special permits for businesses, three special permits for variances. We had one appeal for building specific decision, and we had zero. Now, year-to-date, our town's, our farmers, revolving DVA account has a balance of $3,578.56 and the revenue balance $24,000.
Thank you very much, that's a report to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any discussion on this? There being none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of Article 15, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Sixteen, the Bagnos Schools Senate Program Fund Revolving Fund. Board of Selectmen, recommend?
Favorable.
Finance Board?
Favorable.
Move and seconded for favorable. Any discussion? Any report? There being none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of Article 16, the Bagnos Schools Senate Program Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Seventeen, this is the Groveland Community Trail article. To see if the town will vote to appropriate sum of $150,000 from the CPF General Fund, a reserve fund to be made available for the development of Phase Two of the Groveland Community Trail. This is a second phase of planning and has been conducted to put a required plan in place to receive a Mass Department of Transportation Improvement Plan grant for four to five million dollars to construct the Groveland Community Trail, submitted by the Community Preservation Committee and by citizens petition. Board of Selectmen, recommend?
Of course, he and Tom did not vote on the measure, and the more favorable action. So, no recommendation?
No recommendation.
Citizens petition is the reason why the warrant article, we did not vote on the measure there for.
Okay, Finance Board recommends?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable. Move and seconded for favorable action. Discussion?
Alex Johnson, 461 Main Street, Groveland Open Space and Trails Committee, also here on behalf of Mike Davis as well, a lot of you know my name, not my face, certainly been a driving force in a lot of the work on this trail. First, let me thank all of you who've been very supportive of this project, I really appreciate the enthusiasm. So just quickly, if you've been sleeping, what it is, 3.25 mile shared use path connecting multiple towns' community areas and resources. It includes an on-road portion and an off-road portion. The off-road portion, we're talking about tonight, off-road portion runs from King Street down the right way to Main Street where the old Estes was. How did we get to where we are? 2010 open space survey said the top recreational leaning the town was the rail trail. 2012 M D P C, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission did a feasibility study determining it was a feasible project to. 2013 to 2014, Open Space Trails, came up with a very broad plan, got broad support, went to, posted a bunch of open forums, got some good feedback, proposed a plan at the 2014 town meeting, that we wanted to get some initial funding to develop a plan for the Open Space Trails, or for this Groveland Community Trail. I would remind you all that last year at town meeting, we had, if not unanimous, we certainly had a near-unanimous, but certainly a majority vote in favor of this project. I would tell you that both, last year both, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, both provided favorable action votes towards this action. It's certainly viewed as a very efficient way to use our funds, because it leverages our funds against a multi-fold use of state funds. And I would tell you that I believe, based on what we've done to date, we have been on or ahead of schedule and been very efficient in the use of those funds towards what the town has asked for. What have we done today? Confirmed, clean title to National Grid right away with our title attorney, ensured there would not be any hiccups or roadblocks down the road as we developed the plan. Two, hired a well-respected engineering firm with extensive experience in the area. Three, when we did the appropriation last year, we had committed to do a 10% design plan on both parts of the trail. The percentages are kind of arbitrary, except to say that we committed to a 10% on both sides of the trail, and with that funding, we've already gotten the off-road portion to a 25% stage. The 25% stage is critical, because it gets us to a point where we can actually apply for state funding and work with National Grid for this plan. So this year, instead of coming back to you and asking for money to get to the 25% design stage, what we're actually asking you to do this year with the funding will take us to 100% design stage. And the reason that's so critical is because not only will we be in a position to negotiate National Grid and MassDOT to get the funding to build the trail, but because we'll be at 100% design, we'll be in a position to build the trail if the funding becomes available earlier than expected, which does occasionally happen when the tip gets readjusted, if projects fall through. We certainly, the other things I just want to know quickly, one, we posted four public forums this year, we had decent turnout on some of them, certainly took a lot of feedback in, I would tell you, most of it seemed pretty supportive. We did meet with Senator Bruce Tarver, Representative Lenny Merritt, to get support for the project, to help us with funding options down the road, should we need their support. Couple of things that came back in the feedback that I do want to just address quickly. One is maintenance. Everybody asks about maintenance. Big concern, you know, we built this plan and then we got, we're going to incur all this money in maintenance. So the reality is, we did a study, we looked at other similar trails in Salisbury and Danvers and a couple other towns. And the feedback basically suggested that the maintenance on this trail really is limited to some minor brush cutting and clearing and lawnmower. So really what we're talking about is about a $1,000 to $2,000 budget for maintenance on an annual basis. The way those other two towns that we talked to, more towns, but the way the two towns funded it is with some minor larke sponsorships. Fairly limited number, fairly limited sponsorships raise a fair amount of funds that easily covers the cost of the maintenance. You couple that with fairly limited volunteerism, and you more than easily cover the cost and effort of maintaining the trail. So we're talking about very little from a maintenance standpoint down the road. We've also gone through this with Bob R. Kellyon, who's obviously our Highway Commissioner, about his view on it, his concern about it, and he has no concerns, so I thought I'd at least share that view as well. The other thing I'd just point out, and maybe my last point to point out. Funding, here we'll consider that funding. And I have six minutes to present, because I presented the article. So funding, everybody's concerned about funding. So I would tell you the two things. Obviously, are there any guarantees? No, I can't tell you with 100% certainty it's a guarantee that we will get funding. However, what I can tell you is that Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, the entity that controls the funding for the tip, has provided us with a letter recently telling us basically that we are in a very advantageous spot and very likely to get the funding, right? Secondly, when asked if they've ever had a project that has made it this far that has not gotten funding, they could not provide us with one example of a project that had gotten this far and had not received the funding. So I would offer that up. To the extent there can be guarantees, that's as much of a guarantee as I can give you, but to me, that's pretty good certainty. So, again, a yes vote tonight puts us in a position to receive funds when they become available, and puts us in a position to develop the actual trail if and when those funds become available early. I hope you all stand with me in supporting this valuable project.
Madam Moderator, the way this works, folks, basically, is, and I have the unenviable position of being the only one on both the Finance and Committee and Board of Selectmen that supports this, but I'll defend that position. Quality of life enhancements such as this and the other four or five warrant articles from the Community Preservation Committee would be projects that I would never support through an override or by floating extra bonds and what's called debt exclusions. I would never, never do that. My tax bill this year is 7,600, of which $219 goes to CPA. I think I'm getting quite a bit of a bargain with that. The quality of life enhancements throughout all of these CPA, excuse me, CPC articles tonight, really speak to how we invest in the future, in our children, in the infrastructure of our town, and the beauty of it, and our heritage, and our culture. And so this project is part of that. I have three tests, which I was trying to explain a few minutes ago, and basically the first one is, does it...
You heard it on TV.
Is this an appropriate use of the CPA funds? And the answer to that question is yes. The second test is, is this a completed project, or that section being completed? Yes. As a matter of fact, if we release this money this year, we will actually have 100% design completed, so that we will be in a position to get the money to build the off-road portions, Mr. Johnson said. And then the last, so the first two have to say yes. It's appropriate use of funds, and second, is it a completed project? And the third has to be a no. Is there an unknown or an unaffordable future cost? And I have a no on that with this project, because they've made it very clear, there's two agencies, Mass Department of Transportation and the Mass Merrimack Valley Organization, I forgot the name of it. They have positioned us to get the funding to get it built, because we've gone far enough to get it designed. Thank you. I just want you to know that the state reps have said they'll stand behind this project. They can't tell you they're going to definitely get the money. There's no guarantees you're getting this money. You're putting up so much money, this may occur. When I went to the planning meeting, the connection between here and Bradford is a bridge that was washed out years ago. I don't know the old history, but it's...
I don't know the old history, but it's along the Merrimack River, it got washed out, they don't want to talk about the bridges connecting between those two, so there may be a hidden cost that's involved. Your bike trails will be 1.5 million per mile. I just want you to pay attention that we're possibly, the amount of money we're putting up, I believe is a total of $500,000 ballpark that we're putting up, but there's no guarantees we're getting that money, so I don't know who gets on the hook for that, just think about it. Thank you.
Ladies, I'm Karen Allen, I'm resident, also a teacher here, so I'm going to go out from a different perspective if you'll allow me to do so. How many of you have ever been to Beasy Park? Could you just raise your hand if you've been there? Okay, thank you. How many of you have ever been to Meadow Pond? The trails there with your children or your animals or just by yourself to meditate or whatever. How many of you have, how many of you have ever been to the pines? It's a trail along a river, it's quite lovely. The fourth grade at the Benham School for the last six years with the help of parents and community members has placed trails, has built picnic tables, have cleaned the trails, and it's been a wonderful opportunity for our children. How many of you have had children that have participated or participated now that? I mean, it's, you know, not all of you have kids or maybe born and, you have children or, you know, at that point where you were doing it. But I have a letter that endorses this project, I did share it with you last year, the opinion of the teachers that basically go out with your kids in all kinds of weather and get ticks, like you treated for Lyme disease twice because of it, but I'm committed to open spaces, and I'm not sure how some of you feel about that, but they're not making that anymore. They're not making open space anymore. So, why they? For the past six years, grade four students, teachers, and parents have participated in open spaces and trails projects in Groveland. Over the years, we have created and maintained trails at Meadow Pond, Town Forest, Beasy Park, and Amuse Location Pines. This year, we've also adopted the Landings Turtle, so our children are feeding turtles and raising them to be strong enough to hopefully survive in their habitat when they're put in there June. Students with the help of parents and teachers have built walking bridges, picnic tables, a kiosk, another one to be built at the pines, inserted signposts and they trail maps. Our learning uniting has also sponsored a run and walk at Meadow Pond and haunted hikes at Beasy Park, and we've gotten a lot of preschoolers to participate in that with their parents or grandparents, and it's been lovely. Grade four has also secured grants from the Women Bio Labs and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, which we can see accommodations for if you want to look at the thousand-award site. The grade four teachers meant to review the plans for the rail trail being considered in tonight's town meeting, note, we humanously support this project and look forward to being a part of its creation and its maintenance, and respectfully submitted by the grade four teachers.
I would like to say that, as Joe has stated, I did not take a vote on this, and the reason I did not take a vote on it is this project will probably not be shovel-ready to be dug for eight to 10 years possible. I wonder, in that timeframe, if we'll still have the funding from the state, so I do not want to sign the kind of, the pound luck for any kind of a debt, and that's my thinking behind it, I'm not pro, I'm not con, I'm worried about the town people and where they're going. And as I stated before, every project has cost overruns, I don't care if you're building a house, a building, or whatever, there's no cost overruns, this doesn't have an ending dollar amount on it, and it concerns me what this could cost down the road. We're talking today what is costing possibly in ten years, and if funding is shovel-ready, what will this project cost us? I'd just like to make that known. Thank you.
Steve Kuch, 9 Madison Ave. About the rail trail, I think personally it's absolutely spectacular thing to happen. I spent 17 years as the owner of Stripes up in Salisbury, I went through this with that town where they built it across the street, and same thing happened in here, I was in a, I didn't live in Salisbury, I went to the town meeting. Everybody was worried about everything, but let me tell you, it is spectacular, because you, one day you could be in Groveland with your kids, your grandkids, you ride your bike all the way to Tropsfield, all the way to Portsmouth, New Hampshire one day eventually, all the way to Boston, safe, clean, beautiful, it's a no-brainer. And the state wants these things throughout the state, throughout New Hampshire, throughout the country, they're going to be everywhere. We're running out of space, they're a great thing to have. Go ahead.
Susan Williamson, 1004 Lusa Drive. I feel like I'm a repeat, I'm from Danvers and went through the whole, the whole situation over 10 years of fighting it in Danvers, and I agree with that gentleman, it is just the most wonderful community building activity, and having been a gym teacher for 34 years, our children need a place to exercise and to do it with families is just the best, and to have a safe place to do it. So, I hope you all will consider the health of our community and adults and children alike. I cross country ski, I, I walk, I ride my bike, there's just tons of things you can do on the trails. Thank you.
I have to move the question, I'd like to have this ready finished.
I am Susan Sadowski, and I live at 206 Diane Circle, and I am immensely in favor of this particular project. I have joined, I have gone to a friend's house who has a project at Salem State where there's nice, safe walk, and it's all in our community. That is further away, you have to drive to it, you've got to go to the mall to drive. This is something that we would have here in our area that everyone can use. I'm not that much of an athletic person, but I do like to walk, and I like to walk on even, safe ground, not trails that go up and down and around and so forth. To have that safe, solid surface underneath me or underneath anyone who has some disabilities, this is really ideal. And you think of all the people in Groveland too, there were a number of wheelchair people who could use this facility. So I am in total favor and I think it would behoove our community to update it and put us on the 21st century.
Someone's saying move the question, maybe we have a second one?
Sorry. Move the question.
You know, I'm always going, I have three time to go, I have my kids, there's plenty of trails in town, we go hiking through the wildlife area, I've been to there a number of times, I kid, coyote tracking, looking at wildlife and checking out trees, and all the time I've been through, the only person I ran across was Joe in one of his groups, okay? So when we talk about the community is going to use these things, I mean, they really don't, okay? We have many, many opportunities here, about a third of the town is open space, state forests or town land, so if you want more, it's something, I want things for my kids too, I believe my children should have bicycles, but they don't need five of them, okay? At some point you just have a glut of one thing, and there are other priorities in town like education, like you see the school have dedicated math teachers in every grade. We have limited funds in this town, the funds are not guaranteed, and if you think about it, they're gambling with taxpayer money, it's a half a million dollars, it's, is money last year appropriate, they want another 150 this year, or next year they want another $200,000, so it's a half a million dollars of money that is maybe, and I heard the Board of Selectmen meeting, the CPC came before them, and maybe you get the money in 10 to 12 years, maybe. And what if you don't? What if there's a multimillion dollar shortfall? Shortfall? I heard that the Trussel Bridge to connect the town of Groveland to Havre, it could be $2 million. Who's going to come up with that? There's a potential here, it's a good thing, don't get me wrong, but some good intentions, okay, will go, you will get punished for them people, okay? All right, not all good intentions of you get punished for, but this one has the potential to punish the town, it could be little growth lands, little bent dig where you throw money at it and a lot of money, there's a shortfall. What are you going to do? You're going to have a 90% complete project or you've got $12 million athlete along? So I think you really need to think about what the priorities are, what probability of success is on this, and I think there's, it's being limited taxes, it's count chickens that have matched.
Do I have to stand up? Do I have to stand up? My name's Richard Wallace, I live with my wife Peggy at 205 Diane Circle in Whitestone Village. Before anyone starts my ooh and ah, I'm not against the trail, I see the great impact. I am concerned about the finance in front of-
The mic by you, ma'am.
Okay, that's cool. I am for the, the trail, like it's how it's implemented and frankly, it has been brought up, the people that do have reservations, we said most of it, Mr. Johnson, I'm going to move it, said most of it informed, were favorable. But does anyone know what the concerns were on the other side? In my situation, again, I'm for the trail, but my apartment, my condo is 75 feet away. Is that even a concern to this project for any other houses in Groveland? Are we just going to just ignore those who have concerns? I haven't heard anyone say anything about the concerns, it's always a favor, which, again, it's more, it's a trust notice thing too.
In addition to the, to the maintenance and the funding, which I think we talked about, two other points are raised. One, the question about proximity, we talked to Whitestone, their question about proximity is a real concern, it did come up. The way the state projects work right now, they don't generally cover fencing per se, but we did talk to them about, about the idea of shrubbery as an option, that there are other ways to deal with issues like that, and so we certainly, we certainly are aware of that, we did agree and we will, we're still planning to, when the muds proceed, go back out with our engineering firm, do the measurements, talk about the proximity issue and how we could address that. So that is our moderator, I want to make sure people are aware of that. The other thing that was raised was rapid timing, we had eight to 10 years, and we had 10 to 12 years, I'm sure if we were up here for another five minutes, it would be 15 to 25 years. Timing wise, I would tell you what history has said, these projects typically take eight to 10, eight to 12 years on an average, right? And I would tell you that oftentimes the reason for that is because a long period of time is spent mired in issues with easements and right-of-way, okay? So many trails, before they get anywhere near where we are today, have already spent years and years and years fighting over ownership of the trail. So we are already light-years ahead of where 98% of these projects are because we don't have any of the right-of-way or easement issues that all these other projects have, right? So the piece we're talking about, the, the trail we're talking about today, again, not the future connections to other towns, the trail we're talking about today, improvements we're talking about today, those are clear, all those issues, right? So the timeline by default should be greatly accelerated over that, the time periods that were quoted before, okay? Do I know if that's 10 months from now, 24 months from now? No, I can't tell you with any certainty because like I said, there's this whole issue of funding timing, okay? But I have, but I can say with great confidence that it will be much faster than pretty much all our peers in the North Shore have seen in these projects, okay? And that's because of the fact that we are greatly accelerated around the title issues. So I don't know if it's helpful. Thanks.
I need to move the question. We're going to move the question. I'll try not to forget the mic, thanks. We have to move the question in a second. Those in favor of moving the question say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it, so we're voting on Article 17, Groveland Community Trail. Those in favor of Article 17 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
The majority have it. Article 18, this is CP, Community Preservation Fund, for, I would ask, as many of you as possible, please stay for the rest. I really appreciate as many of you who can stay as possible. The entrance to River View Cemetery, Part II, provides rent for the second phase of projects started and funded in 2013. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable.
Is someone going to move?
Move.
Moved in second, did favorable action on Article 18. Any comments, discussion, questions?
I'd just like to mention, this article is about the River View Cemetery here in Groveland, and recently, somebody who dedicated a lot of his life to caring for the River View Cemetery, Carrie Castaway, and that was Dick Shatter. Dick was the selectman, Dick served on the school committee, Dick was very much involved with Groveland baseball, and he was a town clerk, so, also on aging also, so we'd like to remember Dick this evening, before we move ahead with this, with just a quick moment of silence for Dick and his family. If you'd join us, please. Thank you for allowing me to interrupt the meeting, and Bob Guffler, who's the commissioner of the cemetery, is going to speak to this article.
Bob Guffler, now you can be circle of the cemetery commissioner. First memorial, it's free that we are going to be planted in the cemetery, who makes the decision.
Can you make sure the mic is down?
Okay, the request, as you, I hope that most of you have got a copy of the handout that we had applied, which presented, I think, a lot of the detail and the information about it. If you don't, just please, maybe you could share with somebody who did get them, we ran out there prematurely. At 2013 town meeting, you approved the preservation plan, the development of the plan, it was conducted by a consortium of the landscape architect, a head skull monument conservator, and an engineering firm. We recently received the results of that effort, it was everything that we expected. It is a tremendous piece of work, comprehensive and so thorough in its assessment of the conditions, detailed in its prioritizations. This article is one of the projects that was recommended by this consortium, through this preservation plan. I wish I could talk about a lot of the other things, ongoing, continuing their active skies of sleep, but this is not the time or the place to do that. We are, however, having on May 20th, on Wednesday night, a public presentation of the overall plan that will be presented by the legislature investigator. If you are at all interested in your cemetery, the River View Cemetery, Townland Cemetery, I encourage you to be present to hear this presentation and/or be able to see it on government access, you did. You will see that a lot of the concerns that so many of you have expressed, I got it right at the door this, I think it was the door this evening, the roads, when are we going to fix the roads now? Well, it's included in the preservation plan, and it will require a lot of private and public funding, I think we've got pretty good handle with that's going to come up. The only two CPA are- The only two CPA articles relate to the preservation plan. This one for the entrance way and another one subsequently in another year or two, which will deal with the old area ground section, 1700 slate headstand in the front of the cemetery. Those are the two priorities we have with the preservation plan. The engineering firm looked at all of the large structures in the cemetery. And those include the arch, the front wall, and the holding crypt, which is beyond the entry. They also looked at the roads, they looked at all of the walkways, and looked at all of the curving and all that sort of stuff and made very detailed recommendations. So what they discovered, which is included in your handout, is that the memorial arch is really in very good shape. It really is not a big, big issue. However, it does have some issues. It is leaking, it does need to be repointed. If you look at it closely, and that's the case of all of these things, unless you're an engineer who looks very closely, you oftentimes not even see what the issue is really. The leftmost post, the pillar on the end, has shifted to the left and needs to be reset. Somebody somewhere along the line chipped, and going through that arch, which is very narrow, took a piece out of the arch. So overall, it needs to be repointed. We worked to do that at $11,500. That's 15% of the whole wall cost. Where is the majority of the money going to? It's going to the stone wall, which was built around 1910, the same time that the arch was built. It's made primarily of river stones. And as you probably all driven by it a hundred times, you can see the stones. It's got the cap, the concrete cap, and it's got these pyramids on each one of the posts. Many of those are failed. In fact, almost all of the ground in those, all of that stonework there, and I enjoy you to go down, go in there, look behind especially, the rocks literally falling out of the past development. And that's primarily where the work is, it needs to be done. There's one cracked cap. Two of the caps were taken off by a front end Lotus both this winter and the winter before. We believe that there's other damage, a lot more damage that's in there. The cost to do this, $51,500, is almost 70% of the cost of this particular project. The receiving tomb, dated 1873, it's no longer used. And after this winter, I think some of us are questioning whether or not the cemetery should actually be kept open. This was a brutal winter for the River View Cemetery. That's what the tomb was used for, was to hold the caskets, when you couldn't open up the ground. But today, most cemeteries are open year round, and we are open year round. And Dick Shocker's burial was just an incredible one, in terms of opening that cemetery and being able to move back to that area. The problem with the receiving tomb of the wing walls, if you look at the front of it, there are two walls, the pinnies have all basically failed. The tomb needs to be repainted. Finding engineering support. This is a project, and I've heard much discussion amongst the finance committee and by the board of selectmen about engineering support. And this is one of these projects that, who's got the expertise to look at a project like this? Specify what needs to be done, write the RFP, look after and look over the work of craftsmen who are gonna come in and do this work. And so we have built in about $7,000, about 9% of the cost, to provide that kind of engineering expertise, which I think is essential for this particular project. If we had a town planner or a town engineer, Bill and Bill, they're the ones that would be doing the work and should be doing the work if we had a town planner. That's all.
There being no further discussion, we will vote on Article 18. The 18, sorry. The entrance to River View Cemetery. Those in favor of Article 18 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Unanimous. Thank you. Anybody write on it? Hang in there, folks. 19. Appropriate $17,500 from CPF and Historic Preservation Fund for Beezy Park Main Building. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Unfavorable action.
Move to favorable.
Article, moved favorable, did I hear a second? Second. Moved in second, did for favorable action. Discussion.
White MC, 33 Uptech, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. This article is for some work to maintain and preserve the main building of Beezy Park. You know, I was thinking the other day, if you looked around Groveland and looked for some of the historic buildings, they're few and far between. Beezy Park is one of them. I can think of the Little Red Schoolhouse, a few others. But for some reason in Groveland, we don't really have too many historic buildings left. Think about the Shanahan School. Why was it torn down? The reason is because they weren't maintained. And so in 1996, Town Meeting made a decision to purchase Beezy Park. We got a bonus because not only did we get the park, but we also got the building there. And the building is a historic building. And because we made that commitment in 1996, I think we owe it to keep up with that commitment. And we have CPA to use for that to do some historic projects. Because under CPA, historic preservation is one of the categories that are included under that program. So this project fits in with the category of historic preservation. It's necessary work, and it's gonna help maintain one of the few remaining historic buildings in Groveland. So I'd ask your support for it. Thank you.
Justin Gordon, One Wolf Drive. I'd like to know if any of this money is gonna help take care of the roof problems that occurred this past winter. This money talks a lot about preservation, but what about the incredible damage from the ice dams and all that?
Yes, this winter, we had over $100,000 of damage at the park. Fortunately, we believe that it will all be covered except for $2,500 from our insurance. So that hopefully will take care of that.
Any further discussion? I've seen them, we'll take a vote.
Move favorable.
Moved in second, has been moved in second, did for favorable. Article 19, Beezy Park. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no?
No.
Majority have it. Article 20. CPF funds to preserve historical documents and objects at Langley Adams Library. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable action.
Finance?
Favorable action.
Unfavorable.
Moved in second, did favorable action. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote. Those in favor of Article 20 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Unanimous. Thank you. Hang in there, folks, we'll get through this if you keep going. 21. CPF funds for Groveland Square Open Space. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable. Finance Board recommends? Unfavorable. Move unfavorable.
Motion to table.
We're doing this again?
Motion to table.
Did we have a second for unfavorable? Want to motion to table?
Motion to table.
Yeah, motion to table, back.
Unfortunately, someone said at the back, I think, like to raise your hand, to table. Someone, okay, someone's raised their hand to table. Was there a second to that?
Yes.
Yes, then that stops discussion, sorry. Hold on. Okay. Motion to table, we need two thirds. Motion to table takes this out of discussion, off the table, and basically defeats it for the C E O. We need a two thirds vote for this. So those in favor of tabling it, taking this out of discussion and basically killing it for the C E O, say aye.
Aye.
Those who do not want to table, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, I think. I think we have a two thirds there. Two thirds vote means we table it, which means it's dead. It's dead for this year. Article 22. CPF funds for recreation at Washington Park. Much needed revitalization. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Most favorable.
Most favorable? That means very favorable or most of you are favorable? Very favorable, very, very favorable, okay. Big favorable. Finance Board?
Favorable.
Okay. Moved in second, did favorable. Any discussion? Oh, yes. Name and address first, please.
Sorry, Erin Pinkham, 221 South Street. I also am president of Groveland Baseball this year. For at least 20 years, Groveland Baseball has funded almost all of the needs at the park themselves by community effort, volunteer effort, and our own funding. There are things that are needed to be done in the park this year that we just simply cannot afford. So that's where we've come to community preservation, to acquire those funds. The playground does not currently meet ADA standards or safety standards, and it was actually not even involved by Groveland Baseball, but we've decided to take on the project anyway because it's used a lot by our program and our families. And at this time, we've also included to install a brand new scoreboard at our own expense, a new outfield fence, as well as having the dugouts painted by donation. So the project includes repaving part of the parking lot, where maybe many of you have noticed that the buses currently park there. That really needs to be fixed. It has not been fixed in probably 40 years. You can still see the green paint that was there when it was a tennis court. We would like to refix the dysfunctional and unsafe chain link fence all around the park that is bowed and relatively dysfunctional. It also includes outfield netting, new bleachers, overhead lighting on the new 50-70 field, warning tracks on both the 50-70 field and the AAA field, as well as weather resistant bottom rail being built on all of the six dugout structures to prevent further rot and decay of the structures. And the biggest part of this whole project is to overhaul the existing playground, which was donated by the town of Burlington 10 years plus ago, and it was used at that point. And we would like to install that project with a community effort to bring the community together and be able to enjoy the new playground. Because at this time, there really is not a playground in town of Groveland at all that meets any kind of toddler safety or anything that isn't as innovative as what we can bring to the town of Groveland this time with some of the new playground structures that we have ideas for. So GBL is bringing to the program about $32,000 worth of the project in donations and in-kind services. So we have a lot of skin in the game to get this project rolling off the ground. We also have a dedicated group of families that are willing to put forth their effort to get the job done quickly. And at this time, we don't believe that there are any other further costs associated with the project. So what we have here is really a finite portion of getting the job done. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Chuck Harris, I'm here in Main Street in Groveland. I'm not really necessarily speaking negatively about the project. I really was down in Washington Park this weekend doing my kids, and clearly there's some work to be done. Mainly, you know, I'm always looking at it as just completion of projects because that always seems to be an issue. And that's why I still feel strongly about it. Another one we voted on playing, because they did what they said they could do in here. Two years ago, in April 2013, I voted to have $70,000 of funds to go towards Shanahan bathrooms, and that just got another three-year extension until 2018. And I guess I'm just seeing this money build up where I'm saying that I want to have these parks revitalized and that it's not getting done. So that's a concern. And $220,000 seems like a lot for what seems to need to be done to that park, for the people that are using it in the community. And the other thing I would mention is that Washington Hall, neighboring that area, is still another area that's undeveloped there. And jeez, if you could put $40,000 out of this, $220,000 to get the septic in that, maybe you could actually have something where you have actually a fully functioning area there, a functioning hall, things like that. So again, it's not negatively, I just think, I don't know what all the figures are that came to this. It's more of a fact that I think we should look at things holistically about where we were spending our money and where we're spending it, and what money we haven't spent, what we steadily haven't spent in these particular cases with these unaccounted projects. And that's all I have to say.
Anyway, I'm calling it to Atlanta. I support this project. It's something that will be used by a lot of people, children. My son plays baseball. While he's playing baseball, he's got so much that, yeah, on the swings and the, they are antiquated. This is a tangible fund that can be used within a year. We write, the project will be done soon. So as long as it's put off the bed and appropriated and the payments get pushed, let's do the project. You won't have to wait 12 years for it. You don't have to gamble any cash flow money. It says, as Betty said at the Board of Selectmen meeting, it's one and done. So I better support your statement on that. Now let's get it done. It's a good use. This is what CPA funds should be used for, not for gambling or maybe you'll get $5, $6 billion. You just call my scratch tickets and sit here and scratch them if you wanted to. But this one, you don't need to scratch tickets. They got their figures together, they got their act together. If there's any organization in town that has volunteers that are passionate, it's GBL. So I support this project.
It's a classic example of a very good CPC project. Because it meets three tests. One of them, it is appropriate use of the funds. Secondly, it's a completed project. It is a completed project. And thirdly, there's no unknown or unaffordable future cost. Volunteering at this park has been in place for about 60 years, and I'm sure that we can rely on them to do the necessary upkeep and maintenance. I would never vote for this, again, on override for that exclusion, but it's part of the CPA. It's an amazing investment in quality of life improvement. Thank you.
I can say that the committee that has worked on this is really, really worked hard. They met the criteria they needed to meet. They've done their due diligence. I'm 100% for it and I'd follow it through and I'd help them follow it through. Thank you.
I mean, we just talked there, we said we'd be done in a year. We have 2018 on the, uh...
Excuse me, sir. If you have something new to offer?
He does.
You do, okay.
We just, everybody said it's gonna be done in a year, two years, but we have until 2018 on the article. Tighten it up. Get it done when we say we think we can get it done. All right, we're in 2015 here. Why do we have to go to 2018 then to get the project done? Use the money, allocate the money, and get it done.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, Mike Dempsey for CPC. If you notice, all of the articles we've started, this has nothing to do with baseball. They had nothing to do with that CPC. We've started now making them try to get done by three years. That's no reflection on anybody, but we found that it's sometimes complicated. It's complicated issues. And it's a lot easier to have us vote enough time to get the projects all done, rather than to come back asking for extensions, like we had to do with Seaton. So, this point of information there.
No more questions or discussion. We will move ahead. Someone like to say move for the question?
Move.
Okay, Article 22. Those in favor of Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Thank you. It's that marijuana. Was it me? Was it the other? Okay, Article 22, CPF, 23, sorry. I need all the help I can get tonight. Article 23, CPF expenses for projects, etc. And you can see the amount, recommended amount, for open space, historic resources, community action, community housing. Boto Selectmen recommends. Favorable? Favorable. Unanimous, favorable. Finance Board recommends.
Unfavorable action.
Move and seconded for favorable. Any discussion? That being then, we'll vote on it. Article 23. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
24, Conservation Commission transfer, $8,000 from the fees account to the purchase of services account. Transfer funds. Boto Selectmen recommend.
Favorable action.
Finance?
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable. Move favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All right, we'll vote. Article 24. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Article 25.
Move to table.
Uh...
Second.
Third.
There's a move to table this article. Was there a second for that?
Yeah.
A second and a third and more. To vote to table, we have to have a two thirds vote. So, make sure your voice is heard here. Those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Wow. Those not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
I think the ayes. Going to try that. We need a two thirds vote, so I've got to make sure of this, okay? Those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of tabling, say nay.
Nay.
Oh, I think we've got the two thirds vote. Two thirds vote to table, which means this is defeated for this year. Not, it can't affect the vote. Article 26, to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new section containing a file. Basically, they're adding an associate member to the zoning board. Boto Selectmen recommend.
Favorable.
I said planning board. Did I? I said planning board. I'll say it again. Planning Board recommend.
Favorable.
Favorable, thank you. Sorry if somebody heard it differently. Do we have someone who would like to move this question?
Move it.
Move it favorably or unfavorable? Favorably. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? To add an associate member. We need a planning board report. Make Six minutes.
The article was advertised on 2/2/15 and 2/9/15 in the Eagle for Bune and posted in the Town Hall. The planning board opened the hearings on the article on 2/17/2015. Let me start over. Planning Board opened the hearings on the article on 2/17/15, which were continued for televised meetings until close on 4/7/2015. The planning board endorsed the article. Want to hear any more, or is that enough?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further discussion of this? Move the question. Second, we're moving the question. Those in favor of Article 26, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Ah, the marijuana dispensaries. Oh, fine. Move and seconded to table. In order to table, we need the two thirds vote, again. You're used to this. Those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of tabling, say nay. Okay, going to try that one more time. We need a two thirds vote here. Those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of tabling, say nay.
Nay.
I think the ayes. Yeah. The ayes have it. We're tabled. Take.
Through you, Madam Moderator, the question from Flores, what does it mean to table an article? It means that the article will not be reached tonight unless somebody removes it from the table before the meeting is over. No, the, this article, this article would provide the structure for a dispensary in town. My understanding is that it's not required. There are already dispensaries elsewhere in the county, and there are. So, without this bylaw, you wouldn't be able to construct a dispensary. You need the authorization of this bylaw to... If the article is not, if the article is not reached, my opinion is you wouldn't be able to construct the
So...
My understanding, that not passing this, if it does come up, it can go anywhere in this town. What the bylaw was about was putting it in the industrial zone to keep it away from residential. That's what it was about. So, if it shows up next door, It went too fast. Here's, here's the issue. You've got three pages of information that none of us have read. And that makes it difficult whether you're in favor or not in favor. I mean, again, this is how they operate in DC. They get 2,700 pages of something that no one read, and they vote for it. We're not supposed to operate that way. This should have been in our hands weeks ago, so we could come in as high intelligent voters.
Thank you, Sid. Do you mind to keep your voice down a little?
Oh, I thought it wasn't working. It's the first time it's worked all night.
Folks, if you wish to discuss this, you decided that with the new information, that you would like to discuss it after all, someone can make a motion to remove this article from the table. There has to be a second and a majority vote.
Madam Moderator, I make a motion that we remove this from the table.
Is there a second? Okay. It's been made and seconded to remove this from the table. In other words, to bring it back for discussion. We need a majority vote for this, okay? Just to bring it back for discussion. Do you wish to discuss? Oh, there's no discussion on this. All right. So, we're going to vote. If you vote yes, aye, you will vote to bring this back for discussion. It'll be alive again. Off the table, on the table again, sorry. So, it'll be alive again. So, those in favor of, say, of bringing this back for discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
The majority have it. It's back for discussion. We're almost there, folks. I see people looking at their watches. Hang in there. We're almost there. So, this is back for discussion regarding the marijuana dispensary. Now...
Startle was...
Uh, hold on one second, sir. Oh, yes, we need a recommendation. Selectmen?
Favorable action.
Favorable. Planning? Oh, Planning Board?
Favorable action.
Move, did someone move that? So, we have to have move and second. Second. Move and seconded for favorable action. Now discussion.
The article was advertised on 2/2/15 and 2/9/15 in the Eagle for Bune and posted in the Town Hall. The planning board opened a hearing on the article on 2/17/2015 and continued the hearing for four televised meetings until the hearing was closed on 4/7/2015. The planning board endorsed the article on 4/7/15. The prominent parts of the bylaw, it places the location if someone gets the authority from the common law. This is a state law. It's not our law. It's a state law. And they get a, literally a ticket to put a medical marijuana dispensary in the town of Grove, where we would like to place it if the article passes, is only in the industrial zone. Keep it out of the business zone, which has business zones, which have an awful lot of residence, residential houses around them, and all the residential zones. It protects the residential zones. It cannot be located within 300 feet of any school, and that concludes the daycares. It also contains the language of the Enabling Act that created this legislation. And that's legal, both the legal and punitive parts of the Convo's RMD law. It's written to protect the town if we get one of these things. As I said before, you turn it down, somebody walks in with a ticket, look out. That's all I'm trying to get over to you. It's protection. That's what zoning is all about. Thank you.
Debbie, what's your point? I understand people, you know, seeing an article this size, that they're intimidated by it. But the problem is, no matter what we do, people say we need to give them less information. Today, you know, we have a lot on the internet. We have a lot on the TV. Everybody's going to put their big boy pants on, big girl pants on, and take the time to come educated. Everybody wants us to spoon feed them this information. We can't do it. Even when we had a reporter and things were in the paper, people would go, "I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know anything about this article." It's because you don't participate. You don't, you know, if you turn on the TV and listen to the planning boards, on the board, Boto Selectmen, maybe you will be educated. But I do suggest having maybe a good stiff drink next to you, which you're not watching it because I feel, am I watching? I tend to drink a lot. But you can educate yourself by watching, struggling, I should say, struggling by watching through these meetings. You will learn something. You may actually have questions, which is okay. On Town Meeting Four, if you don't understand something about this article, get up and ask. That's what this town meeting is for. Thank you.
I have a point. In order to comply with state law, as the town of Grove and violating federal law, the distribution of substances that are on the federal, you know, so, well, you know, federal law, just because the Obama administration isn't enforcing drug laws in this country, the next administration may, and we're going to have a problem here in Roland, as well as Massachusetts, that we have a law that encourages the distribution of controlled substances on the federal list. So, I wonder if there's a challenge under federal law to stop this sort of economy growing. I have a question for our legal counsel.
Mr. Fair?
Response is, why the Convo have given out so many medical marijuana locations already and continue to do so? This thing, this is legislation to protect. They may not even have one come here. There's one in Haverhill. There's one in Amesville. It gets into a thing of economics. It gets into a thing about economics sometimes, and, you know, how many are going to take advantage of this? You have to get a prescription from a doctor to get this. This isn't just open to anybody, walk in and get a joint. That's not what it is. Yeah, well, maybe you need it, I don't know. I, you know, I can't, I can't even discuss with you, because I'm not a medical doctor, what this stuff does. But we're not the only state that came up with this. Quite a few others have already. I don't know if the police are still here, but we had them come to the meeting one night, and they seem to indicate that the courts seem to disregard the use of marijuana at this point. And it's like they're walking out the door before the police do. So what's next? Recreational? Some states already went that way. I can't tell you. Remember, we used to have prohibition years ago. For those of you who don't know about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, I think we'll move along. Okay.
A new voice to be heard. Debbie Stewart, Magrallon Street. I actually have two questions. One, I would personally like to know where they put the dispensary in April. Number two, also eligible locations for registered marijuana dispensaries. And one of those locations is the business district, and that's that including the square, which is business end. A lot of families going in and out of there. Why would that be in this as well, if you don't address it?
No, it's the industrial zone only.
Sixteen hundred point four point one says, "Special Department of the Grove Zoning Board appeals in the business district in the industrial district."
That is, that is a typo. We pull that out. We pull that out repeatedly.
Okay. Well, I think we're on town floor for us to vote. Can we have that re-ruled?
Yes.
Can we motion to amend that? Please. Thank you.
We can have a motion to amend that. You want to, you'll have to write it then?
It would just be a motion to remove the business district completely out of that.
Jim? Oh, you've got, thank you. Okay. We're going to vote first on the amendment to remove the wording on the business district. What section is that? Sixteen hundred point four point one. Did we have a motion and a second for that? Someone? Mr. Freo will make the motion, I gather.
I've motion to amend sixteen hundred point four point one. Delete the words "business district and..."
And. So, if you look at sixteen hundred point four point one, the motion has been made to delete the words in the "business district and..." The, the, the business district and the... And. Business district and the. Okay. Business district and the. Motion has been made with a second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? No. Majority of removing those particular words. Now, can we, we have one more discussion here.
Madam Moderator, I, along with a lot of Massachusetts voters a couple of years ago, probably some of us here in the room, voted for the ballot that created the law to allow medical marijuana dispensaries in Massachusetts. But then, of course, one morning I woke up and I said, "Well, not in my backyard." So we have a little bit of a dilemma, because we do need to be compliant, we want to be passionate, and we move by humanitarian reasons for allowing that vote for those of us that voted for it. So what this warrant does is it provides very restrictive covenants, so that in a very narrow way, if a medical dispensary can be built here, it's going to be tough, and it's going to be limited, and it's going to be isolated, so that we can be as compliant as possible, but not so uncompliant that it gets struck down. So it's a delicate balance. Again, I voted for it, a lot of you did. We need the restrictive covenants to protect our children, our schools, and really our population while still being compliant. Thank you.
Move the question?
Seconded.
Seconded, that means we will vote on this. The board of selection have recommended favorable. Planning board recommends favorable. Okay. No more discussion? Those in favor of this article say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Unanimous. Yes. As amended, sorry. As amended, with those words, particular words taken out. Article twenty-eight. Traffic regulations regarding Elm Park and Main Street. Submitted by the finance director. Board of selection recommend. Favorable action. There's no finances. Okay. Finance favorable, we don't have money. Did I hear a motion? Moved and seconded favorable. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote. Those in favor of article twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
Majority. Twenty-nine. Parking regulations. To, regarding stop signs, renumbering sections, et cetera, et cetera. Board of selection recommend.
Favorable.
Finance board has no motion on this. Moved. Moved and seconded for favorable. Any discussion? Questions? No? Those in favor of article two... Oh, there is. Sorry.
Kathy Motakos, Volkeris, ten Volkeris. Why is the finance director recommending this and not the police department when it's our roadways and our laws? I'm really confused on this one and the other one.
So this was a recent audit by Mass DOT. When the building construction began several years ago, this was agreed to by the town to put these in the bylaws. They recently conducted an audit and found that this was not actually put in our bylaws many years ago. So it's a formality, because the town did agree to the bridge work, we had to put this in. Welcome.
Okay. What have the votes on this here? Okay, we're voting on article twenty-nine. No more discussion? Those in favor of twenty-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no?
No.
Majority. Article thirty is Langley Adams Library bylaws. To amend the bylaw, to amend its general bylaws by including a new chapter, Board of Library Trustees bylaws. These will go to the town bylaws. Board of selection recommend.
Favorable action.
Board of Library Trustees recommend.
Favorable action.
Favorable action. Moved. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Moved and seconded favorable action. Any discussion? Questions? There being none, we'll all vote. Those in favor of the new Langley Adams Library bylaws, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Unanimous. Before we even go, we have to close the meeting. It's been proposed and motion made and... Those in favor of closing or resolving this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you very much for all the time, and I appreciate working with you. Goodbye.